Okay, welcome. Today is Monday, December 2nd, 2002. Berlin Select Board Open Meeting. As a reminder, open session, public meetings. A subject to being recorded. Your voice and image will be captured forever and ever. Calling the meeting to order at 6:30. Yay, right on time. So for the minutes, we only have one correcting. So November 4th. Any questions, comments? Well, I did not have a chance to read them, but you guys do whatever you want to do.
I've really not liked it. They came in late this afternoon, and I spent more time on other parts. I think we just hold off to another meeting for that.
Alright, so I will move those to the 16th, which is our next
Yep.
Meeting. December 16th. Alright, while I'm writing, any general public comments? Now we see shaking the head. Alright, 6:31. Come on up, Linda. Come on up, Mr. Pond. We're having our FY25 Tax Classification Hearing, joint meeting with the Board of Assessors, but I only see a board.
Kristen, is it gonna be in this?
It's go, it'll be up there and possibly if you give me the quarter for that TV, the HDMI.
Because I don't think I will be able to see the numbers from here.
Let me see.
You don't have all those numbers memorized? There's only about 30 or 40 of them per slide.
Do like the colors.
How it comes up.
Good job on the colors. Very calming.
I tried to do something different.
Instead of like screaming red.
I'm going to figure out a way to make this larger.
I'm closing your participant screen, so it makes a little bit thicker. Can I just do it on mine?
Yeah.
Do I need HDMI cord for that one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there an HDMI on that that can be just undone and moved over? Oh, okay, yes. Yeah. Those anti-theft things, you know, security gets you in trouble all the time.
Think we're just looking for like a loan. Do you want me to share it?
We need that. I'm gonna run, I'm gonna roll that TV over.
Don't break it.
Cause there are no flush on that wall.
What?
There are witnesses.
There are witnesses.
As you point out, forever on the interwebs.
Your voice and image and breakage of town property can be recorded.
Or lack thereof. It could also prove it wasn't broken during the move and if it.
Oh, never mind. You have a cable on that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why, that's why they moved the television. That television came with cable. And now we'll be forever on that side of the room.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I think the three of us actually have it on our individual devices up here as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You have to turn it on.
It looks like it has power. Yeah.
There it is. You go in blue.
Yep.
For those watching or watching on playback, appreciate your patience while we get things configured. While we go high tech. There we go.
Roger's good.
Yes.
This is true.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, that was me. Sorry. It unputted my sound.
Yep.
Alright, Linda, you're up.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me this year again. This is the proposed fiscal year 2025 Tax Classification Hearing. The calculation for the tax rate and the other tax rate numbers are estimated for this presentation. The valuation number are proposed until the ORR approvals are given. Mass General Law, Chapter 60, Section 56 allows a shift in the tax burden between property classes. This does not change the total levy as voted by the town meeting. It simply determines the share grown by each class.
In fact, sorry, that's the vote we're gonna end up taking is how much we're shifting between the various classes.
Usually these slides are just so the general public knows that we are basing this on Mass General Law and with section. These are slides that every year they are in the classification package. The value property for the purpose of taxation based on fair market value by what sales have taken place for the prior calendar year. For FY2025 was a review of 2022 and 2023 sales for Class 3 and 4. Usually by the DOR standards, if we do not have enough of sales on certain categories, which 3 and 4 is the commercial and industrial, we can go ahead and do two years together. That's what it implies. And the role of the assessor also is to basically review the abatements, exemption, excise, and of course, present the classification hearing to the Board of Selectmen once a year. The purpose of the Public Tax Classification Hearing, Select Board to adopt the town's tax policy by the allocation of the local property tax of the born by our four classes of real and personal property for fiscal FY25. Tonight, the Select Board will discuss the tax rate policy. Basically, you will decide if you want to do a single tax rate or a split tax rate, open space discount, residential exemption, and small commercial exemption. Historically, on the town of Berlin, we do vote for split tax rate, and we do have the small commercial exemption and the open space discount is follows, falls under the residential, which is taxed the same residential and open space. It's the same. We do not have the residential exemption. So the property classification is going to be residential and open space, and the CIP, it means commercial, industrial, and personal property. So this year I decided to include some statistics. So the general taxpayers, I wanted them to be more familiar what goes on behind the numbers. So this is new growth applied as a percentage of prior year, year levy limits and average single-family tax bill. The last couple of years, you can see the growth, the prior year levy limit and the growth per year from 2021 till 2025. So basically, as you can see here, the growth for 2025 on the percentage prior year levy, levy limit is 150%. We didn't have unfortunately a lot of growth this year. These are statistics that I, we have a website of, on the Division of Local Services, and you can pull all different statistics. So the DOR basically puts a very nice presentation.
And again, in fiscal year 22 and 23, much of that new growth was Highland Commons and River Bridge and the apartments that are over there. And that, as we're expecting it to go down, because we don't have any sort of large-scale developments proposed or planned, or I think for some people even wanted in town at this point. I think we've done some of those pieces. And so, yeah, we've gotten our, our bang from those, and there's not sort of more bang coming. Thank you.
And also, you can see the single families, family values from 2020 to 2024. And the average tax bill as a percentage on the income, it's different statistics. So basically, for four years, an average single-family tax bill from 6,792 went up to 8,330. For FY2025, we will present these statistic next year. The DOR didn't have it all together, because this is most of the towns. We're still submitting all the numbers. This is new growth summary statistics for 2025. So for residential, commercial, personal property and the total. So we only had a and then in the middle column is the three-year average growth. It's just statistics. And this is the assessed value trends in Berlin. For FY2025, total value by class. We have exempt parcel count from 179. You can put the LA4, it's the same, just so. Yeah.
Right, and exempt parcels are town-owned land or?
Correct.
Okay, and then the churches are, churches are exempt, the schools.
Correct, and if we decide to put a piece of land on conservation as well, I would have to change the code and put it as non-taxable exempt. So all of these are. We have three extra parcels compared from last year. These three parcels were conservation that I had to basically put them under the exempt status.
So you added three
Correct.
Conservation this year. Okay.
Which, yes, will be non-taxable. Last year they were taxable. This is, I believe, the Conservation Commission. If I am not mistaken, I think you mentioned a property. Is it in Linden Street or?
Yeah, like Horschu Pond.
Yeah.
You got that one. I don't know. That must be one of the three sheets referring.
Horschu Pond is the big one.
100 acres.
The other two are smaller parcels that were donated by, I believe, the same individual, but I'm forgetting the location. They were smaller though, right, Linda?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one was. But this year, I, I don't know if you're familiar with the three ABCs. This is for nonprofit organization that they have to submit the paperwork every year, and I review them. And I had one of the nonprofit, they didn't submit their paperwork on time, and I changed them to taxable, because they do have, they own real estate on the town of Berlin. And I basically called the CEO and explained to them, and this year it's going to be taxable. I cannot go against the rules and the law. And next year, if they submit on time the paperwork, then I will change it into exempt. So this year we have one extra.
I, I find it amazing that the, the value of property in this town is almost a billion dollars. I mean, it is a tiny little town, and still yet the value of, and that does include personal stuff, but still, a billion dollars is a serious chunk of money.
So these are the, this is the LA4 assessment classification that was approved by DOR. And you can see different, the highest is 101, which is the single families. We have 851. We have, compare from last year to this year, we have six new houses. That's the parcel difference between FY24 and 25. So we only have six new houses this year.
It's not the average, I think.
Yeah.
This is the personal property. So we had a little bit of growth on personal property, and it was on the assessed utility, which is usually national grid and Star Horizon. So we had a little bit of growth on that. In total, we have 147 agreement. We have two solar agreements. One is taxed under, as a personal property, but the other one, I am sure you're aware, the other solar firm, I believe, Wheeler. We, based on the agreement, it's taxed differently through real estate. And basically, there is a set value that I cannot go regardless. If the values go up, that always has to stay in this, in an exact number based on the, I have to honor the agreement. So usually, once I put the tax file into VEDAR, onto the treasure collectors, I sit down and do the calculation, what the value should be, and I adjusted and give a little bit of a break on the tax bill. A small commercial exemption. Historically, the town of Berlin always voted for a small commercial exemption. It's the qualifying businesses must be on the list supplied by the, to the assessor by the Division of Employment Assistance Board. I usually, once a year, I receive something from the Division of Unemployment with all these small businesses that they qualify. There should be some criteria. Value must be less than 1 million. And then it's usually only the 10% that we give a break on the total of the commercial portion, what they have. If some of these are mixed use, which could be residential and commercial, like it could be a house and it could be a store. So basically, when I do the calculation, I divided, I only give the break on the commercial portion of whatever the value of that. This is, once we set the tax rate, I go ahead and I do the formulas, and then I enter into my system. So they can see the break on their tax bill.
Yeah, I think you say it later on, but the number of these is like 25 or 20.
25. This year is 25. Last year it was 27, and I, I had to remove three of them because they didn't qualify anymore. One of them, basically, we had an abatement, and they were like, I don't have an office space anymore, so they do not qualify. So it's three less.
And of the 25, most of them are like home-based businesses or these commercial properties in commercial-zoned areas.
Home-based.
Okay.
Yeah, because I remember when on the, on the spreadsheet that I have, it's, it's, all of them are mixed use. I have the, yeah, it's.
So the 25 of the 27, is that the 10% of the total or?
It's a 10% discount on taxes.
A 10% discount.
Yeah, no, sorry, we confused. It's, this year it's totally, that will be, they will get the tax break out only 25 parcel. Correct, and then you only give a discount 10% of the overall commercial value. Last year we had 27.
Okay.
And there's, no using tax like that, there are some, some home-based businesses in town that we've had some issues with. That there's, the building inspectors had to put some cease and desist stuff together. There's no way for us to say you don't qualify or something like this if there's a sort of open order from the inspector's office. Because I feel bad that we would give a discount on taxes on someone who is openly, not openly, but someone who's been found in violation of, of town rules or regulations.
My understanding is if, until something's been resolved, there wouldn't be a way for us to specifically take that exemption away if it's an open issue, because it depend, you know, they may have the opportunity to resolve it, so.
I try to verify it, but it's very hard, because it's hard to go and assess a property. It's very challenging, so.
People don't necessarily like folks from the town coming on their property.
Well, could we then just, to, to get an exemption, to get the benefit of exemption, your property has to be assessed.
I, can we, is that allowed under state law that we require that?
I mean, you can do, as a board, you can vote not to allow small commercial exemption. It's, yeah.
I generally, I mean, I like the idea of supporting small business. It's not a big dollar amount thing. I just want to make sure that the people who are receiving this benefit from the town and thus shifting taxes to other people in town are actually good citizens of the town. And so, you know, if they have open orders, that they're making a life on town employees to, you know, not easy. I don't know how much I, you know, but I'd have to find a way, and I'd love to be able to have discovery. I have no businesses in mind. I don't know this list of 25. But that, you know, to get a discount from the town, I think you have to be a good corporate citizen of the town. And I get that it might be difficult, and today is probably not the day to do it, but, but I'd love to explore that a little bit more at some point about what we could do to make sure that people are getting discounts on their taxes, are good corporate citizens of the town.
Yeah, I made sure that this year I kind of followed more thoroughly, and whoever disagreed on that, they don't have, you know, I'm not using, which sometimes that's not the case, and I am aware, but, you know, I cannot force myself or put my staff in danger if they are refusing. So usually, I, I've, I will just let them know that they disqualify for the 10%.
I think it raises a, a good point, though, even more globally, in that as we look to the future of how much of our excess levy we have used up in limited resources and the fact that there's increasing need on all sides. You know, these types of exemptions, as you stated, do shift the burden. So it's something that does merit some future conversation about, do we want to continue to do that? And I think at some point, it would make sense for the assessors to come back and give us some data on that exemption and, and, you know, what the value, total value of that exemption kind of amounts to. And then it would kind of be a discussion for maybe, once you do the revaluation in FY27, where you kind of want to go once you have those numbers down pat.
Yeah, even if, whenever, if you wish, I have the spreadsheet with all the calculation, and I can provide it to you if you, and, and we can sit down for another discussion. Absolutely, even, I mean, this year it's, unless you, as a board, don't want to vote for it this year, that's an option. But I think that, yeah.
We'll have more firm data too, as we do the revale, I think, which will be, which will be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay. A lot has changed.
This is the eligible parcels, and this is the total eligible value. So this year I decided to kind of include more numbers, because I believe sometimes when I try to explain how the, we set the tax rate, I believe it's fair to educate more, and, and it's easier for the taxpayers to comprehend that. So the total amount to be raised, voted at the town meeting, total town budget, I included the numbers. All of these numbers are taken from Gateway, which we all have access, the total estimated receipts, the local receipts, and then the estimated tax levy, it needs to be raised. And the actual levy and the total assessed value, we come with a tax rate of 1534 with no shift.
I can say, this slide, I found one of the, one of the most useful slides. And if there's a way to even put this like out more publicly, and that the number we vote on tonight, whatever shift we decide or don't do, you know, we're not changing the amount of money we're spending on something. There's no, we as a board don't have the ability to add or subtract from the town budget that is done at town meeting in May. The income is started the next year stuff, and so people who are interested in affecting that number. But the number we vote on May has a direct line, as you point out in this slide, to what your taxes will be, you know. And so you, the, I thought.
Vote on at town meeting?
Yeah, what you vote on at town meeting is, is that they voted at town meeting, and I, I was there too. And so I also voted at town meeting, that we voted for a town budget of 18,833,785. And you subtract what we get from other stuff, then we have to raise that 15.7 million, divide it by the billion dollars or so we're worth in town, which makes fun, beg that, because 15 million divided by 15, it is, you end up with a tax rate of 15.34. And well, we might vote to adjust that, because as you point out, we can shift things from one group to another, but that's, that's simple sort of stuff.
I like the way that it's laid out.
Yeah, because, you know, most of the time when I have the abatement season, I, I meet a lot of frustrated taxpayers. And one day I just, I was frustrated too, and I called the OR, like, I don't know what to do. And they were like, Linda, just put the LA4 at the door. It's, and then I was like, okay, you know, because there's a lot of factors that play into role. It's also the debt, and then it depends sometimes the debt, you know, if it's multiple years.
There's also a way to, sometimes hard to say when you add X to the doubt, the, the budget, how much is going to affect my taxes? Because that, that's still, that 1534 is a pretty neat number, but if the value of your house went up, you know, and even a 1534 is the same number as last year, you might pay more. If your value of your property went down, you know, if we change the amount, we shift from commercial to residential or residential to commercial, that will affect all those sort of things. And so it's not, if we spend another thousand dollars at town meetings, that means you pay $5 more. It's, it is difficult to do some of those things.
It is easier to calculate if it's a single rate, but that, but.
Yes.
Yeah, we can see, I believe, in the next slides, and, and this year I did want, I mean, are we good with this one? Okay, thank you. So this is basically the estimate, and you can see, and this year I wanted purposely to put the share percentages. So they, we all could understand, because last year was my first year, and then I know I was, and I understand just because I do numbers and I'm an assessor, I should be able to basically simplify it. So this is the shares, if we decide whichever split to go. CIP taxpayers cannot pay more than 150, so the last one is the 150. Historically, in the town of Berlin, and I can specifically refer to the last three years, because I know that was one of the questions on the email, and I did print the paperwork, so you can refer to it. Historically, the last three years, 2021, the split was 1.43, and then 22, 23 was 1.49, and 2024 was 1.41. So this is, I tried to include more, like 12 different scenarios, and then you can see the residential and the commercial, industrial, and personal property and the estimated tax rate. I think it's, even, we still have to work on the recap, correct, Kristen, tomorrow. But based on the numbers that I run today, I don't think we're gonna see more than five cents, 10 cents differences in the tax rate. Because originally, Wednesday I sent something else, and then I had to change the numbers with, yeah, I wanted to be accurate.
And we received clarification from the DOR too, that the vote is on the classifications and the shift, not the actual rate, because it's an estimated rate. So just to put that out there for the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And as much in, in 23 and 24, the rate went down chunks as much for revaluation as anything else, especially in 23. When it went from 1563 for the residential to 1384, it was as much a revaluation year. And so the values went up in town, which allowed the rate to go down as well.
Yeah, we're gonna have the revale next year, so it's gonna be interesting. So these are the share percentages. Usually I don't like to recommend. It's up to you.
And so if I read this correctly, that even if we did the maximum by law shift of 1.5, the tax rate in Berlin would go from 1275 to 1406.
For residential would be
For residential, yeah.
Correct, and that the, the, the share would be that 7824 would be the share on residential, and the 16, correct. And for commercial will be 23.
And that even, even if we did the maximum shift allowed, the resident, the commercial rate will go from 25.45 to 23.2. And so even if we shifted the maximum, we're allowed to shift to commercial properties, they would still see a reduction in taxes going into fiscal year 25.
Who, who would see the reduction, Scott?
Commercial. CIP, which is commercial, industrial, and
Personal.
Personal property, yep.
You mean, how do you mean they would see?
A tax rate for commercial and industrial properties would be thirteen point oh two compared to what they're paying right now, which is twenty-five point four-five.
Correct.
And the values matter too, because typically they're in inverse proportion. So when residential values go up, the tax rate typically goes down. So it's, it's hard, especially when you put it through the split, to say that it's an increase or a decrease. It really depends on what that portion of the commercial value is versus how much that property is valued at as well.
I, I, I'd be a pure tax rate. I'm not talking about percentage coming into the town. I'm saying that if I'm a business and I own a million dollar business and I was taxed at twenty-five point four-five, and I now have that million dollar business and I'm taxed at twenty-three point oh two. I am paying less in taxes than I did the previous year.
Correct.
And the converse, if I had a million dollar residential property and I paid twelve point seven-five this year. And we give the maximum split to commercial and I pay fourteen point oh six.
Yeah, if we go to one fifty, that's, yeah.
And I just use that, I'm not advocating for one fifty, I'm just, even if I go to the very end of the list. The maximum the state will allow us to do, it will still be a significant increase in the rate for residential taxpayers.
Correct. And this is where that commercial devaluation keeps continuing to come into play and affecting us um, in terms of. Where that shift is happening and, you know, unfortunately without it, we can see it still would be higher to do just a straight tax rate. Because you're looking at um, fifteen thirty-four approximately without a shift at all for everybody. So it, there is some relief there, still, but it is far less substantial relief than it has been in the past.
If, if we went to a single tax rate, it looks like the average resident would see a twenty percent increase and the average business would see about a twenty-five to thirty percent decrease.
Right. So, yeah, it doesn't make sense logically, we're, we're gonna have to see where the rebel is at. Um, a big, I think, of impact or of impacting factor on this would be the Solomon Pond Mall devaluation that we settled in the A T B case. Um, that was, I don't know how many millions of dollars of devaluation um, happened there. But unfortunately, that um, does have a negative impact on the split.
Correct, because I have, sorry to interrupt, I do have some statistic here comparing to FY twenty-four and twenty-five. So the total assessed value on a percentage differences on the commercial, it went down. Minus zero point nine percent, so we are, correct. I do uh, have the um. The LA four, I can send it to you, but yes.
Right. So, so looking at the, the tax valuations and the, the town report that came out, that goes from year twenty twelve to twenty twenty-four, of that twelve-year period. It looks like residential valuation has actually almost doubled, which is not a surprise. We put some big apartment complexes and developments in town. And over that same twelve-year period, although it went up for a little bit, the, the commercial valuation's down about ten percent from what it was in twenty twelve. And it actually peaked at twenty twenty at something that's probably a third higher than it is today. And so, not surprising to any of us that something magical happened in twenty twenty that reduced the value of, of commercial properties. And they've only not, they've only not recovered, they continue to go down. Which will have sort of ongoing impacts.
So can I ask you a question, Scott? So. All the years that I've been doing this. One of the things that I've learned is that you, we, we should try to keep the. Well, I should say the tax bills. Level, so it's not gonna go way up and then way down and so on and so forth. So what, what is it that, that we need to be concerned with then? Which, I guess, which particular numbers? Would it?
All the numbers have a, a impact on what we do.
Right.
And, and Kristen is right, even if we uh, did the, the maximum allowed by law shift to commercial, there is less and less commercial to do that to. And so that, that uh, uh, at some point, the commercial will be so small. That even doing the fifty percent will have almost no impact on the tax rate and we'd be stuck at a fifteen point three-four sort of place. Because there's, there's not enough commercial to do a split tax rate anymore. Uh, and so if you really wanted to smooth out this increase over time, you might start lowering the amount of the shift. Even though that raises taxes in the short term by a rate that we don't necessarily need to do. Uh, but could. Uh, my, my worry was that if we did a large shift, uh, is that, because the other thing you have to be careful about. From residential to commercial.
On the share.
On the share. If you do that too much, you of course also run commercial businesses out of town. Uh, because they can't afford it, or they hire their very expensive lawyers and do the abatements uh, uh, out there as well. And so, uh, which we saw from Solomon Pond Mall and we know that.
We saw Sears, we had three major one, if you, I, I had to include all of those. It was Sears and it was the personal property.
Yep. And, and there's, right, and I'm not trying to, because there's also some active businesses in town that, that, that do that. And it is their right, they don't want to pay, none of us want to pay any more taxes than we have to. They happen to have high-priced lawyers that, that go from town to town where they have their businesses and try to fight. Especially smaller towns that don't have full-time commercial tax attorneys on their payroll. And our Berlin will never have a full-time tax attorney on our payrolls, hopefully. Um, but I was, but even if we do the maximum fifty percent, the tax rate is still going down. And I still think our tax rates are still, even on the commercial side, are in the same range as they are of the towns around us. Um, which I think makes some of those abatements uh, feel better. If I, if, if, you know, if fifty percent got people about that same twelve point seven-five percent, but the commercial was like thirty. I would expect every business in town to then file abatements all over the place and, and we definitely want to do something uh, lower. Uh, but I'm tending to the upper end of the chart, depending on how much we want to start softening the blow for future years. Or how much we want to limit the raises right now. And I think that's gonna be our tough call. Do we limit the blows now or do we start limiting the blow for five or ten years? That might or might not happen, because no one can predict what's gonna happen to a commercial or residential. No one predicted COVID, you know. Um, uh, but malls as a whole, the country are not doing great.
So how was, how are our ta- tax rates and in the surrounding towns?
You have that on a slide, right? Are we like eight, around ninety?
Yeah, I believe the town of Northborough, they just voted to go to a split, I mean, uh, to go to a single tax rate.
The, the uh, the.
Because of the devaluation of commercial.
Well, and the town report that uh, you were great at including the tax rates of surrounding towns in it for fiscal year twenty-four. You know, we, we are definitely up there at twenty-five point four-five, but. Burl, Hudson, where we share a mall with, you know, is at twenty-seven point five. And so if I'm a business who only cares about my tax rate, I might want to be on the Berlin side already over the, the Hudson side, although we do have a.
Or fight Marlboro.
Um, uh, uh, we have a special assessment though, a public safety special assessment that almost evens that out. But if we go from twenty-five to twenty-three, we're better off. Marlboro uh, looks like they're at seventeen-six, which is definitely lower than we are. Um, but uh, uh, it would, it would take a big shift to residential to get us nearer that number.
It's a tough call, because you also have to look at where, where is your future in terms of residential and commercial. And we don't have, as you said, large projects on either side of the equation. And we're up to almost thirty-five percent of land in town in conservation. So, I mean, I think we want to be prudent about where we go from here and what we look at next. And I think smart growth and smart development is incredibly important, as well as preserving our resources. I think there has to be a balance between the two. I, my concern is if we continue to push conservation, putting land in conservation to the, and getting upwards, you know, of forty percent or fifty percent. You're not leaving any land at that point, or very limited land for development at that point. So I think that there's a broader conversation that needs to be had about economic development and residential development. Um, you know, what else do we want to do with Solomon Pond Mall? Where do we want to be along the four ninety-five and two ninety corridors? What else could we do there? But also, where is our land for residential development and where does the town want to go with regard to that? Um, it, it, it does prompt a, a broader discussion that we really haven't had here since I've started. So that would be something to potentially have in the near future.
What, what, what would be the outcome of that conversation be? I mean, are you talking about speaking with these boards or?
I think it's seeing where the board wants to go from a policy direction and then having those conversations with the boards. And also taking a look at what goes on town meeting warrants and. Um, I mean, everything ties in together. Our zoning right now is going through a diagnostic with C M R P C. And they're looking at ways to modernize the zoning. I would also recommend that that study take into account areas where the zoning might be unnecessarily restrictive. And restricting some of our business activity in areas where it makes sense. And it's hard when you have a smaller community that is bucolic and rural in nature. Because you don't want to change the character of the community and what makes Berlin Berlin. But I think that, you know, looking at perhaps a C M R P C to help us and guide us on some of those recommendations for zoning. And recommendations on what we could do with regard to pad-ready parcels, economic development, those types of things. Might be good discussions to have. We don't unfortunately have a planner or economic development person on staff. So it's not a conversation we get to have very often, but I think it would be really great to, to have those conversations. Especially in light of the zoning updates that planning board is doing.
And um. This year I had, sorry, I had like also, we have a lot of chapter land. That we have to take in consideration, that's the twenty-five percent. Less than normal tax rate that the residential would pay. So it's a lot of factors. And I don't know, I believe I spoke uh, with Kristen regarding the open space. And I was a little bit uh, surprised here, because um, usually when I prepare all the numbers, I like to hire a state consultant. Someone just to see the numbers. And he was like, how come you have the open space just residential and you don't have also commercial on it? And I said, that's how the town voted. And he was like, if there's a barn. And they are having, for example, horses and they are getting, they're doing some kind of a business, I'm still taxing. We're taxing them as residential instead of being commercial.
True, but the, the things that keep Berlin Berlin is that we are treating our, our, we want to, we want to be able to support our farms. Uh, that are out there. And so both the chapter land, which is operating farms, uh, and the for-profit businesses that are running. Uh, uh, again, chapter stuff for our, our agricultural activities. We, we definitely want to be supporting those. I think it would dramatically change the cost of Berlin. If we turn those chapter lands and check, tax some of them at commercial rates, because, because.
Disappear.
They would disappear. They would sell to, you know, heartbeat tomorrow. I'm sorry, trying to make sure that both, that some of those open spaces and some of those other are. Are still supported, because I don't want to give those people any incentives to be selling those things off for a hundred house lots. And there's no difference between us and any other sort of town around. And it does mean we pay a little bit more in taxes for that.
There are some towns that they have open space and they allow chapter lands, but they also have rules that they voted. That, for example, if you have a big building, that big building with one would be on a commercial rate, so it depends. You know, but I believe historically was voted that the open space in here would be taxed under the residential. While some towns decided to, even on the open speed for certain categories, to have that shift.
You know, I think once, I, I think if we have concerns, such as what Kristen has mentioned. It might be to let the different boards know our concerns. And, and in such a way so that they can discuss it, to see whether they can do something to help. Rather than us having a meeting saying, you know, and we, we want you to do this, you know, that's not gonna go over very big. But I think, like I had said before, when we were talking about malls owning, put something in writing, put it in a letter, put it in an email and send it out. I just don't want to be one of those people who's, you know, shaking my finger at people saying that this is what you need to do, because we think. You know, we, we think we need to go in this direction. Because it wouldn't be Berlin.
I don't think, I don't think we're telling them where to go. I think we're telling you, there are pros and cons to these directions. We just make sure that we're consciously going one direction or another and understand the drawbacks, that, that, that all of these tax rates, you know.
Agree too.
Even on these tax rates, you know, there, there's a pro and con to any one of the, the, the dozen or so numbers you put there. And there's other numbers you could have put there. You don't need to do every number from one to fifty. But I mean, uh, uh, that, uh, and, and that there's a pro and con to every single one of those n- numbers. And then I think that's what we're sort of elected to do here, is figure out both that, but also, you know, figure out some of these questions. And, you know, as I do, the, it's still relative, I mean, you prepared this relatively early in your tenure last year. And so it's your first sort of full year. I think it is worthy of potentially having some meetings. Uh, let's say, you know, February-ish or right after town meeting or another, to, to talk about. Like, are there some adjustments that are not wholesale, you know, tax all the chapter land and, and, and run all the farms out? But there might be some rules that something of a certain size or, or a, a certain valuation or, or some other ways that we can. Uh, do that and not change the characteristics of this town.
And, and I think you making recommendations would be helpful for that.
And, and I find those recommendations, here's the pros and cons of going this direction and, and, and that piece. I also, um. Uh, it, it.
And then once you, once you have a lot of the information, it's easier to make a decision. For those people in, on planning board and, and on um, conservation and that kind of thing, when they understand. You know, what we're doing now might be hurting people. Or, do they want to continue doing that because they don't think it is hurting anyone?
Well, and sadly, decisions about conservation, once they're made, are not easy to undo.
Right, right.
Pretty much impossible.
Right. So it's, the housing trust has run across this, is that there was a piece of land that is not abutting any other conservation land in town. That the house, the conservation commission did not think was in conservation land, but when we went to pull the cards and do other stuff, it turns out it's in conservation land. And it has no real conservation value. It has value as a buildable housing lot, either for a, a regular developer. Or even for the housing trust to put something in there that would, to put something off of that sort of exempt land and back into the tax land. That, that helps raise some more funds with the town. But you can't undo those things.
Right. You don't have to take every donation that's offered.
Right.
As conservation land, I think maybe in a evaluative process too of, you know, and, and I think you're right, we should have, you know. And Linda and I have talked about this, putting together some recommendations going forward.
Yes, that would be great, but I believe we also, um, you know. Sometimes I am not aware and I think I should be more involved. I, I don't mind going to the meeting. And just explaining and educating, absolutely not, whatever it's for the benefit of the town. I'm willing to do it, just to explain, you know, and we can sit down and recommend, absolutely.
I think we can write up some info, get, gather the information, not even specifically a recommendation, but something that shows if we do this. This is what happens. If we do this, this is what happens. And then if it's a policy direction. And the board is interested in expressing that, you know, that, that's where it would come from. Because I mean, I can sit here all day long and say, you know, we should develop, we shouldn't develop. That's not for me to decide by any, by any means, so.
Uh, I think there's a lot of work involved in that and I don't disagree with anybody's statements, but. How much dollar value is gonna come out of that? So now we made the people with a hosp bond upset because that's gonna be commercial and the total, you know, what are we getting out of that? Twenty thousand bucks or are we gonna get, you know, two point five million out of it?
Right.
You know, all that work, all that is, is work, you know, for the assessors office. So I think maybe a dollar value ought to be looked at before we go change all this stuff.
And a lot of anxiety.
Right.
For a lot of people.
Right, you know, and then everyone finds out, oh, you're gonna, you know, uh, tax me at a, a new rate. Well, I'll have to sell a house lot every year. Well, no, we're not doing that. So things get, I guess, talked about in the wrong way. And once that's done, you can't put that fire out. You just can't do it.
Mm-hmm.
No, and getting back to the.
That's why you have to be very careful.
Right.
About how, how you're gonna approach this.
Right. And again, what are we gonna get in the end? What, what's the dollar value to, to the town? And getting back to the resident, I mean, the commercial property. How much commercial property do we have left? We are talking about, you know, letting them in, letting all this, how much do we have left to let in? I don't, maybe we have a lot to let in, but if we're at the end of our, quote, residential, I, I mean, commercial property. I mean, may not be much to talk about. Can we add twenty more stores down on Island Commons? Can we add twenty more stores down on Island Commons in Berlin? Or can we add two stores?
Well, it's also just stores, it's also the economy, it suddenly turned around and malls became super valuable, popular places.
Yeah.
They could go back to what they were even four years ago, would, would make this conversation even different than it is right now.
Right.
And I think the point is just long-term planning and where do we want to go and where do we want to be as a community? And, and it's not saying we're going to change things specifically, it's gathering information, putting options out and evaluating those options. Um, you know, and I, I view now that I've kind of put out a lot of things that were, you know, urgent. It, it's, you know, time to start looking at the, the future and, and long-term planning.
You're never going to make everyone happy, there are going to be, I want Berlin Berlin, businesses on the end, don't bother. And then there are going to be people who move into town and go, are you kidding me, I ain't paying this much for taxes and I get squat for services? So bring them in, bring them in and build them.
Why I asked, how do our taxes compare with the towns around us? Cause I think that up until maybe the last couple of years, I think it was that we were the lowest. I, we may not be anymore because of what we're spending, you know, at town meeting the last couple of years.
I believe we're kind of.
Yeah, we've been, we've been mid.
Yeah, mid, mid.
To go on, and so they're both residential, commercial could be, is significantly lower than ours. Um, we're, we're pretty mid about the people around us. I'm still trying to struggle on what n- number we want to, to do a shift at. I'm not in favor of a single tax rate, I'm probably at a number somewhere between point three five and point, and the one point, one point three five and one point five. For the, the, the shift.
Is this the page you're on, I guess?
Yeah, it's, it's the slide that she has up there, the one that has the chart at the bottom that basically tells you what the tax rate, es- sorry, estimated tax rate would be. Um, although it's going to be in that ballpark, I mean, it could go up a, a hundredth or down, up a hundredth or two, down a hundredth. I'm looking at the bottom five. One, two, three, four, five, six, maybe the bottom six rows. Uh, and I've been trying to do some math to figure out sort of what the average impact would be on the average single-family home. Based on some of those numbers.
Yeah, let's say the average single home will be like six fifty.
Right.
Yeah, so we can do the calculation.
So we're, we're, these, these numbers are sort of a continuation of these numbers?
No, no, these are, what was done in previous years.
Yes.
This is what's being proposed for this year. So in twenty twenty four, we did a one point four one, which is not aligned on that spreadsheet, but it'd be about where one point four is. The previous year we did one point four nine, which would be the second to bottom line on that spreadsheet. So that was what we did in twenty twenty three.
Okay.
Um.
So fourteen oh nine to twenty two eighty seven.
Right, as, but as the shift, it's the same, the tax rates are different, but it is still a, a higher tax rate for residential by a significant amount. And it's still a significant cut in the tax rate for commercial and industrial.
Even if you went halfway Scott, you know, at the whole, the one point four line, you're going to see almost a four percent decrease for commercial. But a one point roundup, six, uh, increase for residential, so. Who, who, who are you honking off?
Right.
At this meeting, you know? What did your board come up with?
We didn't, they don't.
They don't, they don't, they can't.
Make recommendations, they, they, they don't, it's our job to make this decision.
Oh, I know that. A recommendation from someone.
That they're not allowed to recommend.
No.
No. I can give you my recommendation if you'd like.
So long as it's not the single tax rate.
It is not.
Okay.
Um, I would be somewhere between one point four five and one point five. I've been looking at the numbers and I was initially coming in thinking we should do the one point five. Because the reduction on the commercial side is so drastic from what it was in previous years. But when you think about where we're moving and the new growth diminishing, do you want to split that out? And sort of not have as big of an increase or a, as large of a shock in the following year? So that was, I'm, I'm coming in, I would, I would be comfortable somewhere between one point four five and five, one point five.
Not been able to remember a number from ten, for ten seconds, I'm going to write these down.
So yeah, it was the one point four number, Kristen, of the fact, the, the calculation I did, that it would be a one point five for seven increase. For residential and a three point nine six decrease for commercial at your one point four line. So these numbers, what, where's the twenty twenty four go here? Twenty twenty four, it was twelve seventy five for residential and twenty five forty five for commercial. And you would bring it up.
Right.
You have no choice, it's going, it's going to fourteen point something.
Right.
Oh, six.
Fourteen oh six is the.
The lowest you can go.
Lowest we can make the, the residential rate by law.
So you're, you're hitting fourteen, it doesn't fif- and then into fifteen, but twelve point seventy five. It doesn't exist anymore, we're going up to fourteen something. And what is the, what is the reason that going so quickly up to fourteen from twelve point seven?
Um, because the residential, commercial value has gone down so much that even if we give them the maximum amount we can ship to them fifty percent. The residential will have to cover more of our taxes.
That's the problem.
Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was a true statement.
Yep. Um, and so just for some clarification, so if the average home, single-family home in Berlin is, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand for round number sake. And we did the, uh, one point four shift or versus the one point five shift. The, the difference in the average tax bill is about a hundred and seventy dollars.
Uh, yes, this year I didn't go up on values on the, only on certain categories because I had to pass. But overall, I did not change a lot, I only went in certain parts of condos because I had a big gap. So I had to pass the numbers for the D O R, so it's not a big difference.
And, and so that, that although I, I, we might be sweating between, you know, again, one point five and one point, uh, four. You know, the, the difference is, you know, a hundred and seventy bucks, it's fifteen bucks a month, it's, it is money. Um, but the difference between those two is not five hundred bucks a year or, or, or a hundred bucks a month. The, the big impact is, and, and for clarification sake, I have the article, cause you know, as Peg points out, we have surrounding newspapers. The Community Advocate pointed out that the rescue, Westboro Average Single Family Tax Bill for a Single Family Home is now going to be twelve thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars. And that, that even in the range we're talking about, we're talking about between ninety two hundred and ninety three hundred or the average tax bill in Berlin being. Three thousand dollars a year less than Westboro. And I know their number, because that was an article, and that they've pointed out Scherzberry and others that have rates that are even higher than that, so. Um, uh, I think I'm leaning sort of in about the, the, uh, oh shit, where'd my, that.
One point four.
Yeah, the. I, I still feel that one part, I, I do one point four five, I think is where I think I'd want to go. I actually really want to do one point five, but I understand that that hurts us in the future and, and, uh, and other stuff. And so, uh, I think a one point four five, which would still be sort of lower than we've been most of the twenty twenties. Cause you've been four, five, four, eight, four, three, four, nine, four, nine and four, one.
What's the difference between one point four, five and five, Scott? Did you do these numbers so quickly?
Uh, only because I had to start writing down, I was trying to do the math in my head, like, I can't remember the number I just calculated.
Well, one point four five will give you, for residential, it's a one point four four percent increase for the.
Well, I was just.
Or it's one point five seven.
So I was doing the, uh, six fifty times, what is it, four, five is, uh, fourteen, uh, point one nine? So the average tax bill there would be nine thousand two hundred and twenty five dollars. Um, and so it's, uh, less than a hundred dollar increase than it would be at one point five. Cause one point five is nine thousand one hundred and thirty nine dollars. And for anyone paying attention at home, again, these are all estimated numbers, you're driving by Berry. Because we're going on average, single-family homes and so duplexes and farms and condos and commercial properties. And that these are estimated numbers that still could go up or down by a couple hundredths when the final numbers are, uh, you know, crunched.
Right, and I'm guessing values have gone up again, um, would be my guess, um. I mean, when we estimated. We were estimating somewhere between like a six hundred and fifty and seven hundred dollar increase. And that was just a rough estimate, given what we did in June at the town meeting, so.
And if I.
Far off.
If I understand the motion correctly, the motion is not actually the commercial industrial rate or shift. It is the residential shift, which you have been kind enough to put the, the, the number on because it's not an equal. The, it's not a one-to-one relationship, and so if you go up by a tenth here, you're not going down by a tenth over here. And so if we wanted a commercial industrial shift of one point four five, the residential rate would be point nine two four five. And so I would like to put on the table then a motion that we have a residential, uh-oh, I don't have the wording in front of me. A residential factor of point nine two four five for fiscal year twenty five.
So, one point four five, correct?
So it's residential factor, yes.
Yeah, residential factor, so the commercial shift would be one point four five.
So this will be voted for at, by twenty five.
Well, uh, it's just a motion, it hasn't been passed by other people yet, and there, other people on the board are more than welcome to have their own opinions on this topic.
So the residential rate would then be what?
The estimated rate would be one, a fourteen point one nine. Again, the idea that when these numbers are finalized, it could go up or down by.
Just for everybody listening.
Yep.
Yes.
So, and what would then be the commercial?
Twenty two, twenty six.
Okay.
So if you went back to Scott's math of a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar average, times the fourteen point nine, you're looking at.
I know, I was trying to make it.
There's no number that causes the commercial to be the same or go down, go, uh, go up. That the most we could ever do by law would be fourteen point oh six for residential and twenty three point oh two for commercial.
Tell me why you don't want to do that.
I don't want to do that because as commercial goes down, at some point, we're going to be forced to go to a single rate and we'll jump to fifteen point three four. And I want to start preparing people for that now.
Not having as big of a, I hope things change that we're not aware of right now.
It's a five-year trend.
Think, think positive, yeah, cause if you went to the, to the single rate right now, you're looking at a two point five nine, uh, increase from your taxes last year. People would just run screaming out of town.
I mean, that's why I would have started.
But the other thing is that for a one point five, then the only direction we can go next year is raise it more for residential. We have no ability to sort of readjust next year.
Well, you are raising it for residential, well, we have no choice.
Year, we would have no choice but to raise it by way more because there is no ability to do anything more to commercial. And so if the commercial went down even a little bit next year, we could end up with a big increase, and so I want to give us some flexibility going forward.
It helps even it out.
And as you point out, we want to even out the tax bills and it stops things from going up, lower, lower increase this year for a much bigger increase next year. It is better to smooth out these increases over time.
Right. Okay, I will second your motion. All right, so we've motioned on the table to go with the one point five shift at a residential factor of point nine two four five. Um, any additional discussion?
One.
Yeah, one point four five.
Yeah, one point four five.
Yeah.
Sorry, one point four five, um. No other discussion?
Nope.
All right, motion in a second, all those in favor?
Um, I believe we have other votes to now take as well.
Kristen, I believe it's the slide number seventeen.
Yep.
There we go.
So, um.
And if I remember these correctly, the open space discount we have historically done, the residential exemption we have historically not done. And the small commercial exemption we have historically done.
Correct, so I would need the votes.
You need a separate vote for each one, or can we do one vote for all three?
I would do separate.
I would do separate votes for each one, so I would make a motion that we continue having an open space discount. That we, uh, uh, accept chapter land properties as open space.
Second. Any other discussion?
Uh, no, but actually before, uh, I would like to come back and talk about the nuances of this, uh, sometime. Uh, probably like again, summer-ish, when, when the, the, there's, we're not pressed on a bunch of other things to, so that we come back to this next November, if we have a chance. Yeah, it's our policy.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, I, I, we don't even know what, what each other's thinking. So it would be good to have a conversation between us before we add others.
I would add others because they're experts and can answer our questions that we have, I wouldn't want a conversation without an expert present who could answer our questions about what this means.
No boards, no.
No, yeah, this is, this is a select board with the assessor where she can answer some of the technical and legal questions.
Yes, and then I will run the numbers.
Come along or they want to join, during, the time is totally up to the assessors.
We need their information, yes.
The open space is, uh, at what rate now?
Residential.
Residential.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're continuing the current policy, my voice is to continue the current policy.
Yep.
No, I added more conversation, sorry.
Okay. So is there a second on that?
I did second.
All right, any other discussion? Harry Nun, I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Um, the residential exemption, as I understand it, really, uh, exempts owner-occupied stuff. And would tax non-owner occupied stuff slightly higher.
Correct.
And the reason the town has not historically done that is that we don't have a lot of non-owner occupied properties.
Correct, so Berlin usually is housing owner.
Right.
Percentage wise, yes.
Um, but it would be potentially a policy where it could potentially both raise some revenue and continue to incentivize owner-occupied properties. As opposed to rented properties here in the town, I, I'm not, I'm not planning on making a change tonight. Uh, mostly because all these numbers are husses of cards and you start pulling a thread and you undo the whole tapestry. But I would, at the same time, we talk about open space, would love to talk about, uh, exactly how many properties are impacted and what their valuation would be.
Yeah.
Um, uh, so that we have a sense, because we could potentially tax them a little bit higher. Would, would also then, uh, lessen the burden on owner-occupied properties in this town.
Uh, I usually receive those forms every year, it's called thirty A D, so if there's like a rent involved, yes. Because I can go in another approach on value in the property.
What is a good time of year to have this discussion with you?
Um, I'm gonna start working on the revale, uh, in January, so it's gonna be a very, very busy.
Yes.
Full of months for me, but I do believe in summer, yes, I will be a little bit relieved. Because I would have all the numbers, because when the revale happens, the whole town goes, I don't go on to section like in an interim year. And then I would have the numbers and then we can sit and discuss and absolutely whichever.
Yeah, the, sort of the reason I sort of picked summer is that I figured it would take a couple of months to put these together, we're about to hit budget season ourselves and town meeting season. And so I want at least that behind us before we, we did it. So I would again do the motion that we, uh, uh, continue no residential exemption, uh, uh, in the town of Berlin for the coming year. For fiscal twenty five.
Second. Any additional discussion? All right, Harry Nun, uh, all those in favor?
Hi. Um, I, I did some quick math, Kevin, I, I think the, uh, uh, small commercial exemption costs the town about thirty or forty thousand, although that was very quick math.
Twenty seven thousand.
Twenty seven, that's, see, look at that, hey, pretty good.
And I just played with a couple of numbers, but I'm taking like the average, around there, yeah.
And, uh, uh, I, I again, I think the idea of supporting some small, uh, smaller businesses in town is, is definitely a thing to do. Uh, there are people who are here a lot, just because they tend to be running their businesses from here, probably a lot more, it's a lot, there's a lot at stake in the town. So I will, uh, do a motion that we continue, uh, to do the, uh, uh, ten percent shift for the, uh, small commercial exemption.
Second. Any additional discussion? Mary Nun, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Kristen and, well Linda, where are we with any type of discussion about moving away from twice a year billing to quarterly billing?
Um, I, just let me finish, there's the revale and I will, the moment that by June. For me, it's not, uh, for me and Kathy, it's gonna be basically more work because. Um, yeah, what I do is like, since we're, um, semi, I only dump my file into Vadar. Once a year, while if we go quarterly, I have to do that twice a year. So basically I have to engage Vadar, I would need to spend more hours with Kathy. Because I need to make sure the numbers are matching, the L A four is matching. So if it benefits the town, absolutely, I, in a heartbeat, no problem.
F Y twenty seven would be the earliest, once the revale is done, if we were to move in that direction.
Okay, just, just as, as a side, we have a home in Ashburn.
Okay, just, just as as a side, we have a home in Ashburn, heam. They have quarterly tax bills. It seems like you just pay it and you're paying it again. And on top of that, they send out. They they in top of that, you send out, um, they send out one bill with two things for two different payments. So if you lose that other half of the bill after you pay the first one, all hell breaks loose.
But I believe um it's easier on the taxpayers to divide that onto four payments then. And also, I believe the town needs more money.
Cash flow issue.
It's a cash flow issue. I live in Oxford. We have semi and I pay around ten thousand dollars. And when those two bills come around five thousand something, it's not, not that easy on. No, I would rather pay, to be honest with you, like quarterly, because it's you always have to think like how.
Um, I I don't know, like, because the it seems as though the quarterly tax bill is going up and up and up. So it's almost like a half year tax bill four times a year. It it's it's terrible. But. I don't know. I don't I don't know that I would be in favor of it, but you know, it's worth a discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm 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 open to whatever benefits. Yes, after June.
Not not that June, the month of June. There you go. Okay. Just checking. All right. All right, are we good?
Couple of the questions, um, how are we notifying people about the situation we're in here?
About using your old tax bill?
Uh, yeah, how are we notifying them?
So we put it on the website and Facebook and also in the Powder House News that we've sent out to everybody.
Can we use code red? And does that qualify as code red? Because a lot of people may not get the newspaper. They may not.
I hadn't heard anything about it. And here I am on the board.
How could that be?
And and that's what I'm telling you. I mean, sometimes I don't care. So maybe.
Has to know.
I was thinking that public orange sign could be put down the dump for a couple of weeks scribing it.
Well, you tell me when it'll be up there because I'm gonna go down and read it.
You're right, but I don't I don't. It was just an idea to put it down there or or a message somewhere. You're right. Um, it just seems like we're not notifying people.
Well.
Correctly. I I don't know unless somebody else has another idea.
I feel bad for.
I would be using the reverse. It's reversed. It's not for emergencies, but the non emergency version of that way more than we are in the town.
Okay.
I can tell you that my office line is on the city of Everett, and if I can go a week without getting a notice from them, it would be great. Uh, and I think here we probably use it for, you know, elections, town meeting, uh announcements about tax bills being late and a few other things like that.
I get phone calls from people that I don't know what to tell them because I didn't know.
Exactly.
And, you know.
We also do a write-up from the item. Again, just trying to hit all potential levels of votes.
How many people get the item anymore?
I do.
Do we?
Margaret had a PR policy that we had someone to say the process we go through to get it.
People get the newsletter. So if you have thirty, 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 then you're gonna get.
I think this, they might be doing the same. They might, one person might be doing all three.
Don't know.
Yeah.
Do we know when the estimated bill is coming out?
Did you say January, February?
Thank you. We have, we sent out an email on November eighteenth to the board about that. I also sent out an email on November twentieth to the board about the tax bills. Um.
Yes, you did.
We're not able to, we don't have to externally borrow, which is great. Um, as soon as we can submit the recap sheet, which will be next week, uh, following town meeting. The state typically takes a couple of weeks to approve it, and then we will be able to send out the tax bills. So it depends, it's kind of in the state's hands once we move from this point forward.
Okay, so the estimated bill pretty much will be in January then?
Would say end of December, beginning of January.
Yeah, okay. Do we know how much that's gonna cost us to do that?
To do what?
To mail that out?
Right, that bill, the bill we're sending out at the end of December and early January is the bill. It's not an estimated bill.
It's not an estimated bill.
That will be the actual bill.
Based on the FY twenty.
Are we gonna send them out, send out? I've heard we might send out an estimated.
No. No, no estimate.
Old bill and then just do the math. So if you're.
So there's no estimated bill being sent out?
No. Well, if by the time you got the estimated bill out, we'd be sending the real bill out two or three weeks later. Then we'll get two bills and be more confused.
Question I had.
So we're not sending out estimated bills.
Okay.
Didn't think we were doing quarterly.
Well, I mean, it's gonna depend on what folks want for their taxes too, because if you pay your second half of taxes next year, then it's not gonna count towards this year. So just take your old tax bill, walk down.
Yeah.
Fill out a check, write your parcel number on it, give it to Sergio. He takes it, he makes a copy of it, he writes on it and he hands it back to you. So when you put your taxes in, now you have two tax bills. And then when you get your one in January and you paid three dollars and it's four dollars, you come down with another dollar. So.
And I assume that's uh, no interest if it's wrong. You're not gonna charge me a late fee because I'm off a dollar correct?
If you paid it early, there's not a late fee.
But if next year, if it's more money.
Balance due on your tax bill. You have thirty days to pay the tax bill.
Right.
Within the thirty days.
Okay.
There's no penalty.
All right.
Right.
Yep.
And and as we've learned previously, the town has zero leeway about late fees and interest because that's a policy set by state law to make sure everyone is done evenly. And so but by paying an estimate, the the interest would be then on a thirty dollars and not three thousand dollars because you're a little short. But you'll have thirty days after the bill comes out to make the reconciliation.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for all your numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can tell I like numbers.
Yes, Scott, you're very knowledgeable. You helped me on the calculation. Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Have a good night.
Have a great night. All right, moving on. Kristin, you're up. TA report.
Okay. Um, the November eighteenth email that Dee sent to the board about prepayment of taxes was just ressent out to everybody. For those of you who did not see it, give me just a moment to pull up my TA report, please.
I did see that email, Kristin, but I was thinking that he was asking something different.
Oh, okay.
So it's not as if I didn't see it. It's just he he sounded like there was gonna be another bill.
Nope.
Like an estimated bill. And that's when I said, well, I haven't heard anything about that.
Nope, no estimated bill. If you were to do an estimated bill, they have to go out by September first. So we always do actuals. Um, all right, so FY twenty six budget. Um, as you know, you uh voted to recommend the proposed two percent COLA and level spending budget at your meeting back on November fourth. And we used that to complete the budget packages, which were distributed and discussed at the kickoff meeting on the twelfth. Uh, budgets were due back to the town accountant on November twenty nine. She is in the process of reviewing them for accuracy prior to sending them my way. I will then sit down and meet with folks to discuss their requests and prepare a recommended budget for the FinCom to review. The next meeting of the FinCom will be held on December eleventh with the Berlin Boylston Regional School District and Assavet Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School, who will present some preliminary budget information. Uh, those are both in person and hybrid and on um YouTube, as are the select board meetings. So you can watch seven thirty on Wednesday evenings. We will be regularly on Wednesday evenings with the FinCom starting in January, uh, just one in December, that being on the eleventh, given the holiday. Capital planning has been busy as well. They have met to discuss the December town meeting articles as well as some of the FY twenty six capital submittals at their meeting on the twenty first. Highway and Fire presented their, I'm sorry, their requests. Um, the remaining departments will present their requests on December fifth and December nineteenth. Um, those are in uh in-person meetings. They are here beginning at seven PM. Uh, typically in room eighteen or room twenty, uh, room two twenty seven. But if you go to mytowngov.org, that will give you the information for those meetings as they are posted. And just a reminder, next Monday will be the winter special town meeting at six thirty at the Berlin Memorial School Gym, and we do invite all registered voters to attend. Uh, South Commons Brown Barn Demo Project, I've prepared the contract with the low quote uh quota, if you will, Action Environmental Corporation, and the amount of sixteen thousand seven seventy five. Just waiting to receive all of the contract documents back from that company. Our new council on aging director started on November eighteenth and has been a welcome addition to our team. Look forward to working with her to best serve the residents of Berlin. Um, we are currently waiting on feedback regarding the recreation job director description, recreation director job description from the recreation committee. The committee has indicated they may recommend turning this into a ten hour a week administrative assistant position rather than a director position. Um, we are waiting for additional feedback from them at this time. And I did have the privilege of attending the Stow Fire Academy uh graduation last month. The town's two new full-time recruits, Liam Cushman and Howie Priest, have both graduated and begun working for the town. So welcome and best of luck to both of them. Uh, tax bills, the, as we just discussed, DOR has authorized the town to utilize, use our FY twenty three revenue numbers to complete the tax rate process so bills can be sent out. Um, once approved by the state, uh, the first semi-annual tax bill will be sent out. We anticipate end of December, beginning of January. They'll be due thirty years later. Dave, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, you can pay your tax bill in thirty years. Um, none of us will be here, so it'll be fine. Um, the town will not need to do an external borrowing. Um, so that is great. We also did have a meeting with the Berlin Boylston Regional School District, uh, who indicated willingness to discuss a thirty day delay in paying January's assessment, but that is now unnecessary given um the willingness with DOR to work with us. So do appreciate that from the schools, but we will be able to move forward with this in short order, which is great. Also did receive excellent news from our insurance company, Maya. Um, due to our low number of claims, we have been offered a zero percent premium increase for FY twenty six and up to a maximum of two point five for FY twenty seven, and that's up to a maximum. So that's a great benefit to the town in terms of cost savings and budgeting. So we've signed on with them for an additional two fiscal years under these terms. Also received an update from the planning board regarding the new Autism Day Center proposed to open in twenty twenty six at the former Worcester Standing gravel site. They have presented some conceptual plans to the planning board. Neighbors participated in these meetings and shared some of their concerns, which largely centered around traffic and lights shining in their windows from cars at certain times of day. Um, the project is allowed by right under the Dover Amendment due to its educational components, but the owners, um, according to the planning board, seem responsive to the concerns of the neighborhood. Uh, the center anticipates serving over two hundred students aged eighteen and over with over a hundred teachers. The site will include uh features such as the day center, stables, businesses for the students to work at, parking, et cetera. So much more to come on this. Um, more exciting news, the town of Berlin was recognized at the recent Green Community Summit along with some other communities en masse for reducing its municipal energy consumption by at least twenty percent after five years of implementing its energy reduction plan. This is a tremendous accomplishment for the town. Many, many thanks to Tim Waisaki and the Energy Committee for all of their efforts to make the town a green community and all the work put in towards achieving this notable goal. Uh, the second floor public safety renovation project has kicked off with Assavet. They began work on the staircase and scaffolding needed to move materials in and out during the week of Thanksgiving. We are at ninety five percent with construction design documents and will have them in the next few weeks. Um, we are extremely excited about the project and um happy to report that it is officially underway. Um, we also had um the fourth hazard mitigation plan update with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, community representatives and town officials. This is a five-year plan that we have to update um every five years. And so we're in the process of doing that, basically identifying and addressing and mitigating hazards in the town and looking at things like dams, flooding, et cetera, climate change. And still continuing to work with the Historical Commission on the drainage project at eighteen seventy and Bullard House.
Questions? Did we get all the budgets in? Anybody late? Anybody so sad, too bad?
That is quite all right. We will report back.
That'd be lovely. Appreciate it.
My, I had a little calendar reminder come up this morning that says, ask about biweekly pay. Where are we at with biweekly pay?
It has been implemented.
Yay.
We had our first um biweekly paycheck on the eighteenth. Is that right? We're in our second, our second cycle of biweekly pay. So, um, yes, on November, I'm really glad I can do math, the week of the eighteenth. Uh, so that would have been the twenty first uh was our first biweekly pay. And the fifth, which is Thursday, will be our second.
Yay.
And we have a couple of little bugs, nothing major. But, um, you know, making sure, you know, deductions and everything is done properly. Knock on wood, so far no one's had a massive meltdown over it. So I'm very excited about that.
I mean, so when something is this complicated, some of it is just how you respond to the inevitable. You know, you get it ninety nine percent right, that still means there's three or four people that something small wrong. And so making sure they're made whole quickly and adjusting the system in my book is still totally fine.
And this appeared to be an instance where um it just, it wasn't that people didn't get the right amount. It may just be that like they they didn't have a secondary account that it was all, it wasn't doubled the amount that was moved into their secondary account. So the dollar amount was right. It was little glitches like that.
Yay.
Yay.
So very happy about that. Many, many thanks to June. Kathy D assisted with that project extensively. So very, very thankful to everybody, Amy, Sergio, everybody was. If I'm forgetting anybody, I apologize. That took a lot of work. Um, really thankful to everybody's efforts on that.
Alrighty, so we are on to have a chat about the ARPA interagency agreements. We have many.
Okay, we, I did six just to be safe. Um, because I wanted to make sure that we preserve everybody's funding. And so what you have before you tonight, and I can just run down the line if that's helpful for you.
Yeah, if you could just give kind of like a, for those who may not understand what this is, well, between, between who and who.
Absolutely.
Um, what it is, why we're doing it, and onward we'll go.
Yes, so um our federal stimulus money, the town received almost a million dollars. Uh, nine hundred and sixty eight thousand four hundred and fifty eight dollars and fourteen cents, to be exact, in what was known as the American Recovery Act um funding. And this is COVID money, the second round. CARES Act was the first round. And the new rules that came out from the state earlier this year stated all funding had to be what's called obligated by December thirty first um of this year. So obligated um means a number of different things, either entering into contracts or agreements. One of the ways that you can obligate funding that you haven't entered into a contract for services yet with a vendor is to do what's known as an interagency agreement. So these are agreements between the select board and either a board committee or a department. So we have six of them um that are not fully under vendor contract at this time that we need to allocate the money in this way. Um, the requirements of these agreements are that they have a dollar amount attached to them. They are with a specific department border committee and they have a scope of services. So uh actually did have town council draft that agreement in accordance with ARPA rules because I don't want any issues down the line. It's a pretty simple agreement, but wanted to make sure we were fully in compliance and our money is secure. So the first would be the public safety second floor renovation project. The total ARPA allocation is a hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars, um, of which we actually do have, um, we have expended almost twelve thousand and we have another sixty four under contract, but the rest is for materials. So we did put the entire amount in an interagency agreement between the police department and the fire department. Um, so that would be joint, since it's a joint public safety project, I'd ask both chiefs to sign off on that. Do you want to do these one by one? Or you want me to do the whole shebang and?
Just do the whole shebang.
Are we gonna do a motion as a whole shebang? Are we gonna do motions individual or contract?
No, let's do the motions as the whole shebang after she goes through all of them.
Okay. Um, the second would be an interagency agreement with the Recreation Committee for the playground at. For the playground at South Commons in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This project does need to go out to bid due to the quotes that we received. So we'll be working on bid documents and I'm actually meeting with the new recreation.
One quick question, is this going to spice for ARPA?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so that's why I wanted town council to put it together to make sure.
I just didn't know if, because they have to go out to bid, does that the contract that you need to have taken or done before December?
No, the, according to the Department of Treasury and they, they did a whole webinar and came out with a set of guidance documents. Um, an inter-agency agreement qualifies as an obligation.
That's fine.
Which helps us a lot, so we were really thankful for that. Um, so that'll be a hundred and eighty thousand with the recreation committee for that playground equipment. Um, and that includes replacing the existing equipment. Um, the site work and making, there's ADA compliant features that are involved in there as well. Um, and I'm actually meeting with the chair, the new chair of recreation tomorrow, um, to discuss this amongst other projects.
So that's one. That's two.
So the next would be the uh Bullard and eighteen seventy drainage improvement project, which is fifty-four thousand four fifty-two fourteen. Um, and that amount is for designing and implementing drainage improvements to the combined eighteen seventy and. The Bullard House sites. And we do already have the design uh quotes uh or design contract quotes in. I just received permission to execute those from the historical commission uh last week. So we'll get those signed and off, and then there's likely not going to be enough money there to actually implement the drainage improvements. We will probably have to combine that with some additional funding. Because believe it or not, just the design of those improvements is almost twenty-five thousand dollars. Because stormwater regulations have changed so substantially in the last eight years. And it's a small site, which means you have to do structural drainage, which is a lot more expensive than if you had a large amount of land. And you could do things like retention ponds or rain gardens or some of the more natural um drainage. So it is a bit complicated to design it on an existing, a small site with existing structures, but we are working on it. Um, the next one is the interior work at the eighteen seventy town hall. That was fifteen thousand dollars that the board allocated. We did put it out to bid um for painting, but it came back at, I believe, thirty-five thousand dollars. So the um committee came back and asked to do some carpeting, some painting, and also some minor repairs. Um, inside the building, so that will secure that fifteen thousand for them. The fifth project is the demo of the old fire station rescue building, twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. To also be matched with some um uh repurposing of the fire station roof replacement article that is on town meeting. Um, which hopefully will pass next week. And so that will be to demo the buildings, remove the debris and restore the site to what I refer to as a pad-ready parcel. And last but not least, implementing the facility study uh recommendations from years zero through three. Uh, meaning now through year three, um, which had, the leftover funds were put into seventeen thousand one forty-eight fifteen. And what I did was I attached years zero through three. For the buildings that the town um does not intend to demo, which would be the two fire and rescue building stations. So those were the inter-agency agreements, if anyone has any questions.
No, you ju, you have the contracts, you have the amount we've appropriated as opposed to the amount that's still remaining on it, which is, I think is a totally fine thing to do. So that.
Yeah.
Some of the numbers on these contracts are a little bit different than the numbers you, you said out loud.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, when you were saying numbers out loud, you were saying the numbers that are remaining in those funds as opposed to the amount of those contracts.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're, they're all in the same ballpark, the money, the, the difference in those numbers went to those projects, it's just the difference between something that's already spent and the amount is remaining.
Correct.
I'm fine with the contracts being for the total amount of the project.
I, I went back and forth on that one and I went, just in case one of the contracts should fall through at some point, I think it would be better to do the total amount.
And there's also a consistency among it too, I mean, there's only what, two or three of the projects have anything spent, but.
Right.
Um, I would uh make a motion to support those uh uh inter-agency agreements as outlined. And uh there's two copies of each one of them here, so my guess is we have to sign both copies.
Yes, please. That way the department border committee will have a fully executed one and we will as well.
Second, any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the six ARPA inter-agency agreements?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you're good to go. Thank you for that.
Yes, there was a lot of work in it, be good for the town.
Yes. Uh, so under uh new business, uh, discuss the special town meeting recall vote bylaw warrant article. Um, I mean, it was for a little history. So last year, Chris, you had asked for it, but given everything that was going on, we pushed it aside. Scott had recently asked for it. Kristen asked all of us if we wanted her to go forth and. Put it together, we said yes, she brought it back.
I did not remember it. Yeah, remember that.
Yeah.
I think there's a couple meetings that a lot of you happened to miss.
I only missed one.
Yeah, and that was the one where Scott and I discussed this and voted on it to put it on the.
The warrant.
The warrant, so I'm not quite sure what there's left to discuss unless you're asking for us to pass it over.
There you am.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
Well, yeah.
Well, I wanted to explain.
Yeah.
Um, because I believe, um, God, I can't even talk now, that mint went down the wrong way. So I believe I had asked Kristen to look into this at one of our meetings. Um, and that was basically when we were concerned about our representation on the school committee. Um, since this bylaw will not help with the regional school committee, which is what the concern was. Um, I proposed we pass over this article. Basically to show support for the current and future residents who are in elected positions. Um, in my recollection, we have never previously had a need for a recall um bylaw. So that's why I was, because it was, it, it was a person from Boylston who had asked me about this. And so I asked at this meeting, I don't remember that we actually. Directed Kristen to draft something. I just wanted a discussion to see whether that would help with the issue that we were having.
Uh, and I brought it for specifically because it did not involve the school board. I brought it for it because I thought it was a good public policy to have it. I used as my example and continue using my example that if I left this meeting right now and stole all the money in the treasurer's office and got arrested and went to jail. I could still be on this board for the next two years. Uh, well, no, but if I, I could be on this board for the next two years and from jail, do my best to screw up the town. And there's nothing you folks could do to stop it.
But why, why do we, why do you think this is going to happen now?
I don't think it, I think it's the best time to do this policy is when it's not someone you want to recall. This is not written for a specific person, this is not written for a specific board. I, I worry that if we had someone in mind that we wanted to get out, we would write this for that person and not what is the best policy for this town. And the idea that you could have an elected official in this town, commit a major crime and still be on their board and do things. Uh, without an ability to get rid of them, I think is problematic. And so when you raised it, it occurred to me that we didn't have it, I thought it was a good public policy to have. And I took it up and decided that we should have it at the town meeting to hold on it to get this on the books before it was needed.
I, I think we have a hard enough time getting people to run for certain offices or, or, or any office sometimes. And I think that this may deter them.
I, I am fine if someone who is, wants to be, to run and ruin this town from jail, does not want to be on the select board, I am totally fine with that not happening. You know, uh, I, 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 again, it just doesn't happen often, Peggy did the research, it's happened uh two or three times a year across the Commonwealth. Uh, not all of them pass, I think we put some good.
Times in Berlin? There was none, there was one.
Berlin does not have a, does not have a policy.
Concern. I mean, I've been, I've been involved in this town for twenty-five years as a, an elected official. I don't know of any problem we've ever had.
And I agree, and the best time to pass this is when we don't have someone in mind.
Or just don't pass it.
Well, you know, I. Just have a risk, and I think you're just, you might be earning the minority, I think that there's a risk that we have that I would like to address.
So there's a motion on the table for a, to pass over this bylaw, uh, recall bylaw on the warrant article, is there a second?
Uh, not exactly, because I don't support it.
And I will not second it either, so uh, motion fails. The recall bylaw stays on the warrant and will be determined by all the town folk at town meeting next week. All right, uh, oh, and there was a question, there was a follow-up, um, from coffee talk, somebody asked. Who, who were elected officials and appointed? And the three of us tried desperately to come up with that list, but if you, for those watching, if you look on page two of the current town report. There is on the page, on the, on the left-hand side are the elected and on the right-hand side are the appointed. Look at you.
I happened to have this because I wanted it for the tax rates, but it occurs to me this also, it becomes the.
Look at that, yep. So, yes, uh, on page two, town offices twenty twenty-three, you've got elected by ballot. Moderator, clerk, select board assessors, constables, uh, Asabat Valley School Committee trustee, uh, trustee of trust funds, cemetery, library. Planning board, board of health, and then appointed by us, the board, uh, ADA. Town report volunteer, appeals registrar voters, historical conservation, conservation agent. Accountant, auditor, superintendent of road and facilities, superintendent of insect and pest control. Uh, tree warden, sexual harassment officer, town council, special town council labor, burial agent. Uh, field driver and agent to, agent to issue burial permits. And then the list goes on, but I'm not going to read it, so if you're looking forward, it's on page two. Thank you, you're welcome, Susan. All right.
I meant to say, as a select member, I always have one of these on me, now I had, I had a special for tonight.
All right, so up to the assigning of the town meeting motions. Uh, were there any that we all need to rock, paper, scissors on uh for that? I would like to do, oh, which one did I want to do? I want to do the building one, because I had already done the information on, on the, that one, the uh. Article ten, repurpose funding for old fire station replacement roof. So that I can bring forth additional information on costs, uh, if we were going to repair it, what it would cost. And thank you to Kristen and Maya for finding us the premiums on those two buildings. Um, eleven hundred dollars a year, I think, for those two buildings.
Yep, that's about right.
So, uh, I think somebody, Steve Clark from planning had asked that and we didn't know at the time, so I want to make sure. Bring that out as well, because I'm sure someone will ask, how much are we paying for buildings just sitting there?
So you want to do ten?
Yeah, I'll take ten.
I, I, I'm just guessing because of the speech I just made, I'm, I, I'm gonna do the recall.
Tag your it.
Well, I would have done it if we had passed the other.
All right, all right, so Scott has seven?
Which one's that?
Eight. Seven?
No.
Oh, sorry, eight. Nice, well, why don't we start at the beginning unless there's, all right, who wants one? One is the upgrading budget transfers.
And I'm guessing all of these are select for, we don't have other people who are, these, these are all on the, because we took them on the agenda, right?
Well, there are police or fire, but, or there's a couple others that sort of belong to other departments, but they're departments under the select board.
Right, so police and fire still would need someone to go for.
One through twelve and.
All right, so who wants one? Budget transfers.
And I'm guessing that there's ten, that we'll all take two or three of them, I don't have any others that I am particularly passionate about.
This one I prefer not to take, but.
Okay, um, then I'll take it, so I got one. Uh, number two is the public safety second floor renovation project funding. Anyone want it?
I'll, I'll do it if you want me to.
And just so you know, Wayne, um, I always get his last name, Ron Coulson, I think it is, um, from Asabat will be there to answer questions that folks have.
Article three is to buy a new police cruiser.
Yes, that one's mine.
Great. Four is the revocation of dedication of revenue to opioid stabilization fund. Hearing how you're all fighting for it, take it.
All right, you already have like three of them.
I have three.
But she'll, she'll.
All right.
Yep.
What's that?
We're all gonna end up with like three or four.
Yeah.
Uh, number five is amend the recreation revolving fund bylaw.
Yes, sure.
Midi bylaw.
Oh, I, I probably should do that one.
Should?
Yeah, it's, it's because of the housing trust, I sit on the housing trust.
Oh, yeah.
All right, uh, amend electronic voting bylaw, number seven.
Oh, that's easy.
All right.
Yeah, see.
Number eight's already spoken for. Number nine is accept master law chapter forty-four prudent investment rule. Scott, one, one more number?
Sure.
All right.
Sure.
All right, uh, article eleven is the fifth modification of River Bridge.
I guess I'm kind of stuck.
I think you're stuck that way.
That's yours.
I think that's your one.
Yep. And twelve is uh transfer funding from affordable housing donation accounts to municipal affording housing trust.
I'm just gonna be up on the.
You might have to give away some of your earlier ones.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one, and if someone wants to take, if we're not evenly split, someone can take care of the others. The two housing trust ones and uh the, the bylaw one.
So you should reassign three, I think.
Yeah, that's the police cruiser, I'll take it.
I'll do it.
All right.
Three?
So three goes to Chris?
Yep.
All right.
All right, so to recap, Kristen, make sure, keep me honest, I have number one, Chris has number two.
We're still over, Scott still has five.
Oh, all right.
I'm just trying to keep it even.
I know, um.
We, we don't care.
Right?
I, I'm fine with five.
Then that's fine.
Someone will accuse me of like hogging the microphone on like, you know, really exciting things out there.
Say they made me.
Yeah, yeah.
We're good. Okay.
It's a number.
Sorry, keep going.
That's fine, I'm fine with five.
All right, so I have one, Chris has article two, Chris has article three, I have article four. Scott has article five and six. Uh, Chris has article seven, Scott has eight, Scott has nine, I have ten. Chris has eleven, Scott has twelve.
I have.
All right, done. All right, uh, I know the next item is notice of intent to appoint part-time rec counselors. Did we ever get the paperwork? Skip that. All right, so I will pass that over and flop that on the sixteenth. Um, next item up is select board provide town administrator direction on F Y twenty-six budget process. Chris, I understand that, sure, so I'll let you speak to it.
Well, I know that we've already um chosen to support the COLA at two percent. Um, this year's. Um, let's see, my question, I guess, was this year's in percentage increase. Um, for the budget, do you remember what it was?
For twenty-five?
Yeah.
It says in our town administrative report, and level spending budget for fiscal year twenty-six.
Right.
Flat.
Right.
So starting with your.
Go ahead.
Starting with your twenty-five number, and then anything that has to go higher than that beyond the two percent COLA. Would have to be justified through like a contract or a quote that shows that it's gonna cost more, that there's a contractual. Non-discretionary cost to it. So basically no specific percent increase in expenses, just the COLA, we're going very conservative.
Well, in, in reading the letter that you're gonna send to department heads. And um, schools and so on, it, 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 is that.
Good.
I was just gonna say that it, it sort of gives it, people the out to, you know, like, we, we, we'll consider it. But we've said levels funding, spending, right?
Do you mean by, they can submit a supplemental funding request? Because we want to know what those needs are, even if we can't fund them.
Right.
That's kind of, you know, personnel has said that, they, they want to know, you know, if there's positions that are coming to retirement. Or are they going to have needs that are open? You know, one of the things we tried to do last year was map out like a five-year personnel plan. That didn't work out as well as I wanted it to, um, kind of like what we did for capital. Um but it's sort of really trying to at least put those needs in a spreadsheet from those supplemental funding requests, so at least we can see where we're at and get it on people's radar, so that, you know, in a year that that all of a sudden becomes um an imminent need, people aren't like, well, where's this coming from? We didn't even know it was here. So just sort of kind of getting it on the the radar is the idea with that.
Well, I mean, that's that's a good thing, because in in my previous years on different boards, it's always takes about two to three years of mentioning something before it gets funded.
That is what I've noticed too. So that was kind of my thinking with that.
Yeah, I mean, so.
Because it comes out of the left field, people are like, no, we're not gonna.
No, no one's, no, no one will vote for it. Right. Um but I know that last year, it seemed like we didn't have a chance to have discussion on the school's budget. Like, I mean, as much as we probably should have, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you would go to the finance committee and it seemed as though sometimes that it was all decided there at the finance committee meeting. So I want I want us to be able to give direction, you know, for um for whatever they're asking or.
I don't remember that at all. Last year, I remember sitting at this table and arguing.
Probably come up with a direction.
No, but I mean, she because if, go ahead, Scott.
Uh hold on for another moment.
Alright.
Um what I was gonna say, I think part of the issue last year and why it's probably unclear is we just didn't get that information in a in a timely fashion, which I have been assured will not be the case this year. And I'm hoping on the eleven that will start us moving down that right path. And my goal is to disseminate everything received to both the select board and the FinCom, so that information is universally disseminated across the board. Um and it's certainly something we can have conversations at FinCom Select Board, you know, all of those meetings, but what we've also learned from Desi is that they are really allowed to give us their bottom line number, and that's the only one now that we can print in the warrant. FinCom can't come up with a alternate budget.
Correct.
And it's a yay or nay on the board, on the school's um final bottom line budget number. So I don't know that. I mean, I think we can push back in areas where we don't understand or we want more information, or we're saying, I don't really think we have the resources to fund that, and we can certainly look at when we, where we, everything filters down once we put the other department budgets in and what we have left over and have that, you know, discussion. But it's more gonna be, this is what we have left over, this is what they want. I doubt they're going to line up and is is gonna come down to the voters.
Well, I mean, this, I'm gonna, Scott, I'm gonna steal your example from last year is that they can give us a line item budget all they want, all they want, and at the end of the day, we give them twenty dollars and they paint the halls gold. We have no say. They want twenty dollars, we give them twenty dollars.
True, but I mean, I I know that years past, the school committee did work with the town. We can't make anybody work with us.
Right, and years past, there were separate school committees, and this is, in theory, this is, last year was the first year we really tried to do things as a regional school, and regional school from both Desi and from our lawyers and from what I found online. The school gives us a number, we vote yes or no, and we vote no, and then there's a second meeting where they can ask for that same number again, and we can vote no. And then there's another meeting that are both towns together, and that's the number, that's the meeting that sets it. And so we have no say in any of the. Yes, well, but when it was a separate sort of committees, we have no say over it.
Regional, at Tohonto the whole time.
Tohonto was regional, and because there were separate budgets, we had more say over things. And so we probably went to look at the.
Well, I mean, so getting back to the point of providing the town administrator direction, so are you saying, I mean, I'm looking at the uh TA Act, which talks about her but her, the administrator, sorry for pointing at you and going her.
Well, we're policy people.
Yes, but are you saying that that there is something in here that Kristen is not doing that you want her to do or should do but is not here? I mean, the laundry list is long for budgetary powers and responsibilities.
Right.
So is there anything that she's doing?
Well, I guess I'd have to take a look at that.
Yeah, so.
I I I don't know. I don't think so, but.
Alright, so what are you asking Kristen or us to ask Kristen to do differently?
I guess just maybe, you know, every chance you get, just to come back to us and say, how do you feel about this number, rather than, you know, this is what the, you know, say recreation gave to me? Um, you know, is that, is this gonna work? Or, you know, give us feedback on on how you arrive at um some of your decisions.
Right, but she can only do that at public meetings, because otherwise we're blown right through, and I felt that you did last year, that's why I called it budget fun, so.
Well, I brought it in pieces last year.
Be an argument about it. I'm just asking for, you know, let us give you some direction.
Right, well, that and that's what I'm asking, that's what I'm looking for, is what type of direction do we want to give her?
And so if I may?
Anytime she may, anytime she may need direction.
Um, what I, as a select board member and maybe not as an action of the board, but I I'm giving notice in some respects as we go through the budget this year. I think I would like to be, I will plan to ask which line items we are legally required to do and which ones we are doing because we as a town would like to do.
Sure.
Um because I think that helps us have a better sense of what might be cuttable and not. Um uh and in a great universe, even like, you know, who is telling us, I don't think I need to know chapter like Mass General Law Acts, but like, you know, uh these sort of things. Um I I have some grave concerns that the the school is, who we have no say over their budget is going to ask for another large increase. And even if we ask the schools to make cuts, I think we might need to be looking at the town at not fund cuts to be made. And I think not fund cuts have to be made potentially in things that are not legally required for us to be doing. And so I want to start exploring what some of those are. Uh and uh I also want to go sort of unnoticed that some of these sort of not fund cuts that I might suggest, I myself might not be in great favor of, but I want us to at least be aware of them. And that if I'm looking at potentially cuts and I know cuts, I mean, we have some uh proponents of everything the town does. I think all the town employees are are hardworking and and good meeting uh that I besperse no one by saying, should we continue to do this or should we not? Um I I think it has to be a serious conversation if we want to keep taxes affordable in this town, is that not only are we gonna be asking the schools to make potentially unpopular cuts, but we should be looking at some unpopular cuts myself. And I'm totally fine if most of my cuts, so where we legally can, I might be asking for cuts. And so I I'm going to be totally fine if I get voted down two to one on a lot of these. Uh because I also think that the people out there, and and I see this, uh uh is that someone will say, my taxes are too high, and then the next sentence asks why the transfer station is not open more hours. You know, why are my taxes so high? But why did the plow take two hours to get to my snow and street? Every service we do in this town costs money, you know, and so it is a conversation where there's not a right or wrong answer about what's the level of services we want for what amount of taxes we're willing to pay. Um and I'd like to just explore some of those a little bit deeper this year.
Are there's those things that he's saying? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, because unfortunately, it is, it's not gonna be, I do not think it will be a fun budget season. Um I think we need to do a better job educating those here, here, and those watching and attending future budget meetings to make Scott's point exact. If you're looking for this, then unfortunately, this and this have to go, and when this and this go, this is gonna impact you this way, so make the decision.
Right, that's the direction. That's a direction that the board can give.
It's a suggestion that that the board can give.
It needs to be a direction, you know, that's what we do is give direction.
Right, but we can't give direction to the school committee.
Right.
No, I'm talking about to Kristen.
And I hope the request doesn't become too burdensome. So at some point, if I'm asking too many detailed questions, you know, but I figured the earlier I give it to you, the earlier.
Then we're okay with it.
Alright, then let's move on. Alright, uh next up is a consideration of a donation from Eagle Leasing, two fifty eight Turnpike Road, South Row, consisting of two Conex boxes of the value of about five thousand each.
Uh so these folks uh generously offered to make a permanent donation to the town of two twenty foot Conex uh containers to store the Asabet tools, materials and equipment during construction while they are here. Um they would be stored in the parking lot near the old shed across from the flagpole and generator area. Um Asabet will likely build a temporary roof over the boxes for additional outside storage to keep materials or equipment out of the elements. Um it'll save us uh over thirty six hundred dollars for the time Asabet is here working as the rental fees are a hundred and fifty dollars a month. And then later, um the fire department can use them for a training building um to perhaps put up at the highway garage or by the transfer station, but that permanent hasn't been decided yet. Um the select board is legally um responsible for accepting all donations to the town, and they have asked for a donation letter, um which they can use for their taxes as a write off, so that is why it is here before you.
And do these boxes have ongoing maintenance needs?
That is a good question. Um.
And and as I understand that disposing of these, once we decide we don't need them, is actually a significant cost.
Okay. I can find those things out.
Um I I imagine as a large metal box, the amount of maintenance needs is tiny.
I wouldn't think.
They don't have roofs, plumbing.
They they were gonna buy them if they didn't get some?
Well, well, buying them would have to be capital planning and and but renting it is thirty six hundred dollars, but uh uh I I mean, I I I like the idea. I think there's use, like the transfer station already has a couple of them up there. Uh uh I just, you know, there's one, I, there's one of these by the Brown Barn that I'd love to see go somewhere. And so I worry that as a town, we end up collecting a large bunch of large metal boxes that we don't have uses for. And uh we could pay Asabet to break it down into smaller pieces and bring them over to a salvage yard at somewhere, but have fun with the Setaling Torch Day. That'll be just a a fun project.
I can definitely get more information on disposal, how that would work, if it could be broken down by the students at the end.
Um how important is the timeliness of this? Could we, could you do some of that research and have us do a meeting on the ninth, uh the ninth before town meeting to?
They wanted to deliver them today.
Oh.
And I said, yeah. They have to be accepted by the board first. Um I can, um.
I can make a motion to approve.
Can you make a motion in accordance with NDL chapter forty four, section fifty three and a half, eh?
Right.
Fifty three. Are you sure? Are you sure about that, Dee?
I am.
Okay. Is there a second?
Um I I'll second it. I don't think I feel so strongly about this that I want to oppose this and stop this project from happening, because I so believe in this project, and the project is saving us so much money that if the added to the cost of this is a disposal of a couple of boxes, it still saves a serious chunk of money, so.
It it's a valid question that I can find out more information for you.
Right.
Alright.
We just talked earlier about accepting donations and having them have negative on term, long term consequences, so I figured I wanted.
So we have a motion and a second. Um lots of discussions been had. Uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving on to boards, uh questions and liaison updates. Mr. Hawkins, you can kick it off down there.
See, two posted notes though, so you know.
I'm so proud of you.
Um uh I would like us to make sure we add back to agendas talking about buildings.
Yes.
Um uh I think we took care of some of the easier ones, the buildings. I am uh most interested in having very unpleasant conversations about uh include uh the old highway barn, the Bullard House, and the library. Um I imagine as part of those conversations, uh uh and it could be both as a precursor to it or as part of it, um really what our space sort of needs are for things out there, because whether or not some of those buildings have uses uh to handle some of our space needs. Um and and how we might continue in this town to have better policies about what we accept uh and and what we keep. Uh we did something with early, was it really ARPA funds with Margaret? We used some sort of funds to do a dumpster and sort of cleaning out some stuff. Um but we still continue to find trucks and and I think uh through the helps of, I don't know if it was a, was Lisa a volunteer in the clerk's office or paid in the clerk's office, but that that with her help, there was a lot of cleaning up of stuff in there, and just wondering how many more sort of corners and boxes and document retention policies that we can decide that uh we have to to include stuff.
For what? What I, what are we, what are you saying? He's giving her direction to do something. He, is that okay with you too?
Well, I put it on the agenda because it was something that we promised to do.
Yeah, I'm asking these to generally be on the, I tend to be looking at Kristen, because she'll be the reason, but these are for agenda items on those stuff.
Yeah.
Um uh and then again, I I didn't see we have a December ninth meeting scheduled before town meeting. Should we have one of those?
Well, yeah, we usually do.
Right.
Uh we meet it, we meet at six.
Yep. Yeah.
We meet at six and then close it at the end of the meeting.
And and I don't have anything to talk about, but I I it'd be, I I think we should keep ARPA on that agenda. It might be something we just pass over, but because we're near the end of the year, there just to make sure there's nothing that comes up that requires us to
We just did the last, the interagency.
We did everything we thought we needed to do, but with only one other meeting before the end of the year, just having it on the agenda, I I'm expecting it would be.
Remember.
Well, some things, I mean, finance may have something, capital planning, I know in a couple meetings that I attended, they said that they would make decisions on the floor, so it would be nice just to be there in case something needs to happen.
Um uh I think that'll be it fine for now. I can save some of the other stuff for another meeting.
Alright, Chris?
Um I sat in on um Melissa's first council on aging meeting. Thank you, Dee. And um and um but there's, I mean, they were, they're all just getting to know each other, I think, and um so there really wasn't a lot of new stuff, but it sounds like they're going to be having um a lot of new different kind of ideas from Melissa.
Anything else?
That's it.
Alright, uh uh so rec, uh as we talked about earlier, that they may shift it from a director to an admin position. They're still working the way through that. The rec software is in, and I guess training is underway. It's cranking. And uh it was mentioned that there were cracks already in the court. So I took a took a jog down. Actually, I took the car, I didn't jog. Uh drove down and found some cracks between the two tennis nets, notified Kristen, who notified Lazaro, who came right in, filled them in. They're not pretty, but I'm thinking that they just fill them in so they don't go in the wintertime. But they'll be back in the spring, correct, to make them pretty?
They're coming back to paint them in the spring. They can't, it won't adhere.
Yeah, it's too cold. Yep. Um and then Concom, oh, nothing really going on in Maplewood. Um Highland Ridge seems okay. They've got some issues they're addressing on um a street in town. They are uh working on the CR for the Powderhouse Hill. I think that's on their agenda for Wednesday. And also working on some additional trail maintenance. Uh I've noticed that they're going around putting up signs saying, you know, uh project funded by CPA. I saw that one at the Bullard House the other day. And they are working with Tohonto to get some volunteers um to see if they can put some items together and get kids a little bit more interested um in that. And also, thank you, Dee, for reaching out to website person uh for doing after hours training. I don't know what happened to that, not my call, but appreciate you making that, because I know it was a concern. And that's all I got. I don't have anything on energy. I'm so sorry. Alright, um no need for executive session. Is there a motion for a, an adjournment? Don't move.
Second.
Alright, uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, see you on Monday.
Thanks.